We'll call this meeting to the common council and the order, vote please.
Alderman Teeter, here, Byer, here, Niles, here, Miller, Brandle, Lars, Tully, Young.
Here. Alderman Miller is excused tonight. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and reason for it.
Jim Keane, 350, right here, back again. Okay. First of all, we got the pond drained out and they forgot to put the pipe and hook it up that goes to the over and back. One of the conduits we ran into was spring many years ago down there and we hooked it up there. It's been there and we don't think it's hooked up. It doesn't, it doesn't appear to be inside the cement casting there. It's hooked up to a spring in back of Ron Ferbuk's house. So that's one of the things that are wrong. I got a bill the other day from the Ensign Association. I got, Mr. Opperman told me I had to pay a thousand bucks, but anyway I had to pay eleven hundred bucks to clean up my mess at the health. They already got paid a couple, a week ago or so. So anyhow, I'm concerned about a couple of things in back of my home. They addressed the flooding overflow in. I hope it'll work. I'm not here to bitch about it, but I don't, I'm sure if you take a look at it, it doesn't appear to be right. I wish you would come down and take a look and you could see for yourself. They wanted to put, there's two four-inch holes in there. One in the top, there's one in the bottom down there. They got the pond set tool already, but guess what? When I came here ten years ago or so, we tore that six-inch pipe out of there. Now we got an eight. We went from a six to a twenty-four inch straight for that pond. It doesn't appear that it's right, but maybe it is right. Maybe I'm all wrong, but it doesn't appear to be right. I wish you'd come down and take a look for yourself. Maybe your city engineer can tell you what. Mr. Kelly was kind enough to come over the other day and we had Callaway over there, Dan Callaway. He owns, it's a private pond. He claims there's no agreement he has with the city of Jefferson. You can ask Mr. Kelly outside. All I, he was there, I brought, he was there for two hours listening to him talk about it. I think there's an issue. I don't know if there's an issue. I have no idea. I never seen any paperwork saying that they could dump all the water into the pond or it has to go somewhere else, but he claims that there's, the only thing he did said was they would take and use to take the water from the golf course. Just, I don't know how it's worded. I have never seen anything to it and I think it should be checked in. I see Mr. Penner was down there today. I'm thinking when we're checked out that overflow, which they pulled a plug on the thing on Friday and let all the water out of the pond. Since then, you gotta come down and take a look. The west side kinda caved in because once you pull all the water out, the pressure of the water holes, the sides in there and it caved, it kinda caved in and I'm all over. But anyway, I hope you take good care of it because it could be beautiful because you're gonna have more problems. If we don't get some plantings to hold the, to hold the soil in on the side of the banks, it's all gonna be ended up, a lot of it's gonna be ended up. Right now, the pond right now is about two foot, two and a half feet of water. Before they, before they took it out of there, it probably had four and a half feet of water when they drained her out last Friday. And I wish you, somebody would stop down and take a look. Tim came down yesterday. Thank you very much for coming down and I guess you told us I got a call from Gally today. I didn't say they didn't have a transit. I said they didn't have any plans. Maybe I said it wrong. Maybe I did. And I'm just saying, that's what I said and I go, Gally said. And they put it in, so anyhow, I wish you all would stop down and take a look. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Senior one? We'll move on to a mayoral proclamation and it's my sincere honor tonight to honor someone who has served the city of Jefferson well and in a very dedicated way for many years and that's Dave Hubbard. And Dave is here tonight. So I'll just read this. It's proclamation of the city of Jefferson honoring David Hubbard, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas since joining the department on September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-three, the last millennium, David Hubbard served the city of Jefferson for more than twenty-eight years in the public works department, working as both mechanic and public works foreman until his retirement on October first, twenty twenty-one. And whereas David Hubbard has been instrumental in the successful maintenance of the city's vehicle and equipment fleet, as well as the maintenance of the city's infrastructure and construction of new projects in the sub-city public works department and maintaining our streets through snowplowing during winter months where all services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens and businesses of Jefferson. And whereas during his time of service with the city, David Hubbard served the citizens and businesses of this community tirelessly and without complaint, being on call twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week, three hundred sixty-five days per year. And whereas David Hubbard has been completely dedicated and showed exemplary care in all the work he has done, truly caring about the city's needs and its citizens and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the city of Jefferson and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Jefferson, that with gratitude and appreciation, thank David Hubbard for his twenty-eight years of dedicated service to the city of Jefferson and extend him best wishes to him and his family for a healthy and happy retirement on this day, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is my sincere honor to honor Dave. Sometimes I'm out of few words, but I would invite you to go up and say whatever you can say, but we've signed all your checks, so you can be honest with us now.
Yeah, it's all good. First, thank you, mayor. Thank you very much. It's been really enjoyable and very blessed, but I'd like to thank Tim, Engdale, and all council members, president, past, the citizens of Jefferson. I've really enjoyed it. I really have. It's been a wonderful blessing, worked, working in with all the different departments and just really thank you very much for the opportunity. I really do appreciate it, so thanks again to everybody.
Can we take a picture of you?
Sure.
Can I do a picture of you?
Come on, girl.
Okay, now hold on.
Hey, I wanna get a picture, I wanna get a picture of, just Dave and I. You have one, you have three mugs.
Oh, man.
Thank you so much. Yep, all good. Yep, that's my mug. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you. Yep, oh god, okay. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing you. I know. That's, that's. Well, thank you for taking the notice.
Until she puts frosty in your hair. I will, I promise I'll lick it off on hair first.
Can we eat these now?
Yes.
Dave.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, guys. Congratulations. Yep, I'll swing down, get those coats to, and I got the hand from the West Blueberry Reserve. Oh, I got that one sometimes, so.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Good, yourself?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Nice to meet you. You're back.
Want a cupcake?
Yeah.
Okay.
You make the.
No. I promise I did.
You find if you did.
All right. We will move on to ordinance number eight dash twenty-one and ordinance to annex property from the township of Assle. Property owned by Todd and Rochelle Zorn to be introduced for a second read by Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman. City of Jefferson proposed ordinance number eight dash twenty-one. The common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordain as follows. Section one, territory annexed in accordance with section sixty-six point zero two one seven of the Wisconsin statutes and the petition for direct annexation filed with the city clerk on the fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty-one, signed by a number of electors residing in the territory equal to at least the majority of votes cast for governor in the territory at the last gubernatorial election and the owners of all of the land in the area and real property in assessed value in the territory, the following described territory in the town of Assle in Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed to the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin. The legal description of said property is on file at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. Section two, effective annexation. From and after the date of this ordinance, the territory described in section one shall be a part of the city of Jefferson for any and all purposes provided by law and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinances, rules, and regulations governing the city of Jefferson. Section three, temporary zoning classification. The plan commission has recommended a temporary zoning designation of SR two. Section four, ward designation. The territory described in section one of this ordinance is hereby made a part of the third ward, district B of the city of Jefferson, subject to the ordinances, rules, and regulation of the city of Jefferson governing wards. Section five, separability. If any provision of this ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, or if the application of this ordinance to any person or circumstances is invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provision or application of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional provision or application. Section six, payment to town pursuant to Wisconsin statute section sixty-six point zero two one seven fourteen, the common council agrees to pay annually to the town of Assle for five years an amount equal to the amount of property taxes that the town levy on the annexed territory as shown by the tax roll under Wisconsin statute section seventy point six five in two thousand and seven. Section seven, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Seven.
Second by Alderman Byer and discussion? Any questions about the property formerly known as the vendor house, the John Angel House, the Bow Lincoln House? Fill, fill in the blanks. I've been around with history. And there were no objections to this. So there are no questions or comments. I'll entertain, uh, excuse me, we'll call the roll. Have all in favor, please, to have a say. Aye, don't give a vote.
Alderman Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Senior analyst, thank you. In ordinance to amend section three hundred dash nineteen B of the municipal code of the city of Jefferson related to rezoning of thirteen twenty-five North Watertown Avenue, council president Brandle, please, for a first reading.
Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council member, citizens of Jefferson, the first reading of the city of Jefferson proposed ordinance nine dash twenty-one. The common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, ordain as follows. Section one, section three hundred nineteen B of zoning map, city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made a part, is amended to change district boundaries of one three two five North Watertown Avenue from ATA transitional to zoning designation of SR two, single-family residential district. To the length of the property description in lieu of reading the complete text, copies on file in the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. Parcel number two four one dash zero seven one four dash three five two four dash zero zero one, address one three two five North Watertown Avenue, proposed permanent zoning designation, SR two, single-family residential district. To the length of the property description in lieu of reading the complete text, copies on file in the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. Parcel number two four one dash zero seven one four dash three five two four dash zero zero one, address one three two five North Watertown Avenue, proposed permanent zoning designation, SR two, single-family residential district. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect in full force after passage and publication as provided by law and notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated herein the zoning map, city of Jefferson. This is the first reading.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number six on our agenda tonight, consideration and discussion to amend the city of Jefferson master plan to allow for a change of zoning from commercial to industrial for two hundred Pittsner Parkway. Tim, you want to explain the request and we have Lyle here tonight. I'll give you a chance to, to offer a few words after Tim introduces the council here.
Yes. So in your package, you have an application for the rezone of the former Excel property along with some additional property that is proposed to be purchased from John Spangler. So as I understand it, Timewell, the plastics company, has accepted offer to contract to purchase that building, subject to, no doubt, numerous contingencies. I've not seen that, but the intent of the company would ultimately be to relocate their manufacturing, uh, uh, business, currently located just west of the Nestle plant, into that facility following it being repurposed. To do so, they would need a change of zoning. I would generally say, I think there's one issue that really jumped out on us is that due to the nature of the business, the type of manufacturing business, plus a significant outside storage demand, it really isn't a rezone to light or limited manufacturing. It would have to be a rezone to, A, either our medium industrial zoning and then adding a condition and use to allow for the outside storage, or a rezone alternatively to the city's heavy industrial zoning category, which would allow that outside storage as being permitted. So it's really medium or heavy and not light. That's the first, that's the first issue that really jumped out at us. The issue though, really before us, that even if the city wanted to approve that rezone request, it really can't until it makes amendment to the city's master plan or comprehensive land use plan, because under the smart growth statutes of the state of Wisconsin, a city can't rezone a piece of property that would create a conflict with the land use designation in our master plan. So our master plan, which is, you know, fairly recent, a year and a half to two years old, really designates that Excel property as commercial property and not manufacturing. So to be able to rezone it, step one would be for the city council and the plan commission ultimately to approve an amendment to our master plan and that's a whole separate process. You know, it'd take a minimum of sixty days, could take as much as maybe ninety days and it's fairly onerous process. You got a thirty-day public notice, you gotta notice all the adjacent municipal governments, in this case the township governments, along with Jefferson County. Then work through the plan commission first, ultimately the council, and along the way you need a public hearing. So that's really step one. I would generally say whether the city council wants to amend our master plan or whether it doesn't is a matter of a pure policy issue. It doesn't have an obligation to do so if it doesn't want to. It can, as a matter of their policy, you know, permit that request to go forward. So as you may know, if you had a chance to read the application of the company, which was in your packet, again, their intent is to relocate a manufacturing process into that facility, acquire some additional property from the Spanglers, and a significantly large outdoor storage requirement, which really would encompass, you have to think about it in terms of acres. And I would generally say that is not how I think the city envisioned that Pittsner Parkway corridor developing. It's kind of the front door to the city from the west. It was always viewed more as a commercial corridor with residential taking place to the east of there where the city is, you know, developing its subdivision. So I throw that out to you. Lyle is here and he may wish to say a few words, but I think the consideration for you tonight is whether you want to direct staff to take that step to start the process to amend our master plan or simply tell us no, you know, that, that is, as a matter of policy, we don't want to do that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to invite you to the podium. Niles with Timewell, really the petitioner through their contractor here, and if there's anything else that you'd like to add beyond what Tim summarized.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you for a few moments this evening. Tim did a very good job of explaining the outline of what our request is and I understand it is a lengthy process. We picked on that building because it's within our bounds as far as time and finances to try and do something with. It's a very good building, which needs to be utilized in some fashion and it's almost exactly the size that we would need to move our facility to. The facility, we've got approximately a year and a half to move it and a lot of the equipment that we have to move takes a fair amount of time to move, so it's only about six months to a year. So that's why we're looking at that and we just would appreciate the opportunity if you folks would consider amending your master plan.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Lyle before we start our discussion? No?
How much value do you have some extra land you're purchasing land from? Mr. Spangler, how much land are you purchasing from the Spanglers and how much of that will have outside storage?
We've created a mind display if you would consider changing it. There it is right there. Okay, and what that shows is about five acres additional around the plant and we are willing to put up a chain-linked fence with some screening and screening in form of landings, whether it's trees or bushes or a combination of those two things, to act as a block against the visual part. A lot of the materials we manufacture are rolls of black tubing. And this tubing is about eight feet wide by eight feet tall and we can't stack it real high, but we can stack it a little high. We can put one on top of the other in some cases. But if you would be interested, we have a website, timewellpile.com and it shows overview of our plan at Timewell and it lays out pretty nicely. It's not like a disorderly fashion of just throwing things out there. It looks pretty, pretty good from the air, from up the road either way.
Okay.
So that's a good question.
Anyone else have any other questions?
How high would your fencing be? We probably would put up like an eight-foot fence to begin with and then the plantings you can see in the green and brown would be some kind of trees or bushes that would attain a greater height. So we believe that open, you know, the city can, can say, well, we'd like to see this, that, or there. Since it's gonna be fairly close to a residential area, we could even be talked into going completely around the, the site and it could be turned into a walking path for all we care from, be on the outside of the pan.
Is your equipment that you make the L's from, it produces some noise, obviously?
Very little. Outside of our building, if you wanted to go over and just observe, you really can't hear the equipment running hardly, it's very quiet.
And that operation would be within the Excel building?
Yes. Everything's contained within. We have kind of a closed loop system. We don't require a lot of water. The water gets reused and re-chilled. There's not dust that comes out of it. About the only thing that, that creates much, much of a disturbance would be, there's a yard tractor that goes out and loads these onto semi-trailers as they go out, so that creates a little noise, but it's not extremely noisy and it's not something that goes on twenty-four seven. We have specific times, the fall is a time we put a lot of tiles and then the spring again, the summer is fairly quiet, so it's very. But at least we're a company that provides a fairly significant amount of jobs for the community and we're getting ready to add six more jobs now. Once we get relocated in a new facility, we would probably increase that by an additional six jobs. So currently we have like thirty-four employees and that would give us an additional twelve.
Anyone else have any questions directly of Lyle?
Can you put back one frame? I just wanted to see where the, yes, I just wanted to see where the, in relationship to the property to the west that we are developing the new meadows.
Here, I can show you this one. So right here is the planted subdivision to the meadows and this is the existing Excel property and if you look at this map, the east property line extends to this structure, which is essentially this point right here. So I'm roughly measuring that. You're talking seven hundred feet to the back sides of properties, seven hundred, call it eight hundred feet.
But we were cautiously hopeful, optimistic that perhaps we could venture further west with residential.
Correct. That was, that was discussed.
That it would be directly next door.
Correct.
Currently we're right next to a rental house.
My business is on, right off of both down Garland Street, so I drive past, I drive past you every day, multiple times. My, just, my concern is we're trying to make this a new residential area, town of big residential development. I'd be concerned with putting an industry next to that. It's just my concern.
I guess I wouldn't consider it. Well, I guess the point is that we've had for fifty or more years, we've had one, two, three of our largest industries right in that three subdivisions, right down there. We've had, right Clement Avenue, Los Angeles, we had Big Blue, we had Nesco, we had this industry right there and we've had homes all around it. So I never been to all of those homes, I'm able to go around this one.
I would also come, I would, Lyle's talked to several, several of us too and I would point out a couple of things. One, yeah, industry built around, or houses were built around industry when Jefferson was built. Right now we're talking about the corridors coming into the city. One of the smart growth opportunities that the city has always looked at is building out through the bypasses. So, you know, these are entry corridors into the city. The other thing I would say as far as the location of the bypass and the height of the. The other thing I would say as far as the location of the bypass and the height of the bypass, this is elevated above these properties, therefore regardless of what type of screening you're seeing as you're coming along the bypass, you're still going to be able to see into that. I believe the development that Lyle's proposals up to six hundred, six hundred tiles, rolls of tiles being stored outside.
So are they saying anything, okay, so there's that. I'm just thinking of a buffer from the interstate, I mean, how close do you want to the interstate? I mean, how close do you want?
A hotel or a gas station might want to be built there.
Yeah.
That's commercial.
Right.
It appears to be a fairly blended area now, but the commercial real estate, we've got, what is it, Wiggly Wiggly and, I've got Marine Service, and the farm, the seed company, I don't know what their plans are for the future to move or not move, but then you've got fairgrounds there, so it's fairly blended.
We do have two industrial parks that are, that would be probably sold. What? We expanded the north industrial park.
Yeah, we voted on that. Okay. Does anyone have any, from the council, have any specific questions of Lyle? If not, I'm going to come, bring it back, thank you.
Thank you, without further ado.
So, at this point, I'd like to hear from everybody on your feelings about whether, the first question is under consideration is, do you favor amending the city's master plan to allow either medium or heavy industrial zoning in this location?
I can start if somebody wants to. I like the business, I like the jobs, this is not the place for them. Outdoor storage isn't even allowed in their industrial parks, wide open indoor storage because it looks bad, and so when we did the industrial parks, we cleaned that up. Here you're going to put a spot zone in the middle of what we're looking at to be the major growth area of housing in Jefferson now right now, which to me is sending a really signal. I really would love to see them find a spot, and I would love to see them stay and hire those extra twelve workers, I'm not opposed to that, but I am opposed to seeing the location of this building become industrial. This just doesn't belong there, it's not anywhere near industry, and it's going to back up right to practically to the back door of the houses we're putting up now. And any expansion of that, it was at eight hundred feet, but we expanded eight hundred feet, that's not all that very much, down the line, you'd be right up against the wall. I just, I would not hold the favor of doing that kind of spot zoning at all.
I am also not in favor, probably. As I said, I drive past your business four times a day, because I live right over there too, and it's nice and neat and tidy on the outside, it's not noisy, I give you all that. I just don't think that's the place for it. I hope we can find you a place, I hope we work hard to find you a better place, but I think that that is not just our vision for that side of town. And I agree with the spot, have a spot in this industrial area in the middle of that just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm not in favor.
Are there any other implications in the city that could be identified as a win-win for Timewell, a win-win for Jefferson?
Well, I, yeah, well, in my opinion, the answer, I would start by saying, I think this is a use which best belongs, I think, in industrial park setting. And we have talked to Timewell about, you know, building new from the ground up, out in the north industrial park, and, you know, have talked about proposals and things like that. Of course, that has to work financially with the company's objectives, and also the timing of when they have to relocate from their current property. I don't believe there is an existing building in the community that could work for their type of process. I think our options, alternatives are to building.
So does that mean that we don't have another option besides XL?
Not an existing building?
Not an existing building. I think we would say building new from the ground up is the best, is the best option.
For us, is that an option?
I think, you know, that's probably an alternative they're considering along with possibly others, so.
Is that an option?
Probably not. The fact that we're in a building that we've been able to maintain and do well at with a fairly low rent, and we've tried to look at different options, provided the city's been very generous in offering some options in the industrial parks, but they take a lot of, the one site that we have looked at will take a lot of work to be able to get it flat enough, these big rolls of tile like to move in the wind, and so you have to have them on a flat lot, if you don't, they'll roll away from you. And so, you know, we've looked at the industrial park, it's a beautiful park, but it's a bit too hilly in the areas, and we have to do a lot of earthwork to make it feasible. That, and with the initial cost, Timewell is not a huge company, and it's still owned by one individual person, and we have six functional plants. And the problem that we have is we just bought one plant and put it in a new location, and so to do two would be pretty much out of financial reason for several years.
Any other comments?
My concern is that, I don't, I don't, my concern is that we are, we've gotten into, what do I want to say, almost like a coloring book type of thing with our master plan, and we're not, we're not allowing ourselves to be having any ability to adjust to other things that come up. I do believe that if we put someone out there, a light industrial that has the foresight that we put in a walk path, put in plantings, wants to work with the city that way, it might be the way that we keep that industry in town, and something to be looking at. And not to be so stuck on us having just homes up there, that we can do what.
Well, the problem is, we have a lacking of homes, and we don't have a lot of property to build homes, and that would just kind of make things a little more difficult to do, you know, it's like...
Well, you need the people working somewhere to afford a thing, and if you don't have industries in a, how, in a town, they're not going to move to that town. And they're going to move to the town where the industry is.
Well, we have people working Jefferson, and have a hard time finding a place to live in Jefferson as it is, you know?
Others will just say to add, this is not light industrial use, this is medium to heavy industrial use.
Okay. Well, we've heard from all four people on this side, if you'd like to get some input from...
I agree with Mr. Brandl's, that it'd be great if we could keep Timewell here, but the XL building, that is not the spot for that type of industry. And I just don't know offhand where there would be a spot in Jefferson other than the industrial park, but I can't see it happening in that location.
Laurie, tell me.
They all summed it up pretty, pretty well.
I mean, I don't even know what would happen, what, 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 what would happen with the XL building, if we didn't do anything, if it didn't...
Something that would be conforming with the zoning. We've already, we've had this request before, this is the first company that put it in writing to bring it to this point with you, but we've had requests from other people that were interested in that building, and we told them that wasn't appropriate, because that's what we felt the consensus was here, at least a majority of the opinion. So I see at least five in opposition, I don't think that we have a majority that's interested in moving this forward, although I think everybody, I won't speak for everybody, but we all value Timewell in the community, and we'd like to keep Timewell in the community, but as discussed at a previous meeting, that's not, not in, not in that location.
We appreciate being here. We have a very skilled, good group working at our plant, and we appreciate the city and everything they've done. Any ideas that you could throw our way would be more than appreciated, and, you know, we're keeping, working on this, trying to find a win-win for everybody, including the employee.
Well, we're certainly interested in that as well. So, I will, given the feedback here, it will take that if there's a majority opinion not to move forward with a zoning change or amending the city master plan, but that's what I hear from some of you, most of you. All right. And we will continue to work with you to hopefully find an eligible option.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, number seven. Number eight, and ordinance number eleven dash twenty-one, an ordinance to modify section two oh four of the Jefferson Municipal Code to regulate city parks to be introduced for its first reading by all of you now, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson proposed ordinance number one one dash two one, an ordinance to modify section two zero four of the Jefferson Municipal Code to regulate city parks, an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter two oh four of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson to regulate city parks. And due to the length of this ordinance, in lieu of reading it in its entirety, there will be complete copies in the file at the office of the city clerk, as available for public inspection during regular business hours.
And thank you for that first reading. Next to move on to ordinance number, or resolution rather, number fifty-nine, tonight's consent agenda, all the woman's letter, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members, and citizens, City of Jefferson Resolution number fifty-nine, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for October twenty twenty-one in the amounts of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents, and September manuals in the amounts of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-eight cents. Payroll summary for October eighth, twenty twenty-one in the amounts of one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Council minutes from October fifth, twenty twenty-one, of the common council, licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We have no operator's license, we have sale of goods in the right of way for Big Bar LLC for the, for the furball on, in Rotary Park on Saturday, October twenty-third. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second?
Second.
Second by all of you, Lars? Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, approval please signify by saying aye, as your calls your name, or if you're opposed.
Alderman Niles. Aye. Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye, abstaining for the minutes.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number sixty, a resolution authorizing the award of contract for tree removal at Conservancy Place. All the woman, Teeter, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, for Resolution number six zero, authorizing award of contract for tree removal at the Conservancy Place, whereas the City of Jefferson requests proposals to remove approximately one point seven five acres of trees along South Dewey Avenue as part of the planned residential development, and whereas Chrisens Tree Service provided the lowest responsible proposal in the amount of nine thousand dollars, and whereas the overall bid scope of work includes tree removal, brush chipping, removal of wood and chips, while leaving larger healthy trees along South Dewey Avenue, and whereas this is the unbudgeted project, and funds for this project will be paid from proceeds of a lot sales. Now therefore, it be resolved by the councils, common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves the Chrisens Tree Service Inc. bid for tree removal in the amount of nine thousand dollars. Be it further resolved by the common council, and the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson upon review and consent of the city attorney.
Thank you. All the team of motion for approval?
I would so move.
I can do the motion.
Laurie moves.
Second.
Any discussion?
This was discussed at finance committee and unanimously recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you. No other further questions? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye, as your name is called, or if you're opposed.
Alderman Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Team unanimous, thank you. Resolution number sixty-one, a resolution authorizing the resurfacing of two alleys in the City of Jefferson. Council President Brandl, please.
I'm Mayor Opperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, City of Jefferson Resolution number sixty-one. Whereas the city engineers requested three proposals to resurface two alleys extending west from the one hundred block of North Dewey Avenue, and whereas Jefferson County has provided an estimate in the amount fifty thousand dollars for Jefferson County to pulverize and resurface these two alleys from North Dewey Avenue to Wilson Street, and whereas the city engineers reviewed the estimate recommended for surfacing of the two alleys by Jefferson County due to the condition of the pavement and the subgrade, and whereas this project is unbudgeted and will be paid out upon balance, now therefore be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes the city administrator to approve the proposal with Jefferson County in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to resurface said alleys. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second?
Second.
Second by all the woman's letter, discussion?
This was also discussed in finance and unanimously recommended by finance.
Thank you.
I can describe this.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if you look at the screen, the areas we're talking about, the two alleys extending west from Dewey to Wilson, the southern alley being from Dewey to the EMS Building. These are alleys that we got complaints on earlier in the year, and I had looked at a couple of different options, it's not included in the city budget for repair. In the past year, we have done some repairs to an alley south of Racine Street, in that case, we did a wedge, which is essentially filling in the gaps with asphalt and then seal coating it. This one is in a little, little poor condition, to say the least, so what I've done is requested proposals. This is going to be using a portion of joint highwayage from the county, and we're still looking at two options. One is pulverizing and paving, and the concern there is the load base that's underneath, So I'll be meeting the county up there this week to discuss this, but that's what we're looking at doing and trying to complete this year.
Thank you. Any questions, Bill? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and if you're opposed.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Chairman Adams, thank you. We will be deleting the closed session portion of our minutes tonight's, or agenda rather. All entertain a motion. So who? Lars and Niles on a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, my goodness.